Everybody, I would like to call to order the February 3rd, 2022 meeting of the Mendocino County Planning Commission. The Mendocino County Planning Commission meetings will be conducted virtually and not available for in-person public participation pursuant to provisions of Government Code Section 54953 and the recommendation of the Mendocino County Health Officer. Meetings are livestreamed and available for viewing on the Mendocino County YouTube page at youtube.com/mendocino county video. In order to minimize the risk of exposure during this time of emergency, the public may participate digitally in meetings by sending comments to pbscommissions@mendocinocounty.org or orally via telecomment in lieu of personal attendance. All public comment will be made available to the commissioners, staff, and the general public after processing by staff and can be viewed as attachments to this meeting agenda on the Planning Commission Agenda page. To submit public comments via telecomment, this Zoom link and associated instructions can be found on the agenda for this meeting. In order to ensure that you are called upon to provide comments, please complete the telecomment form found at mendocino county.org/government/planning-buildingservices-meeting-agendas. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Here.
Commissioner Pollan?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Chair Pernell?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item 2, Planning Commission Administration Discussion and Possible Action, including adoption of a resolution of the Mendocino County Planning Commission finding that the state or local officials continue to recommend measures to promote social distancing in connection with public meetings. And we have a copy of that resolution before us. Would anybody like to make a motion on that?
I'll move that we adopt your resolution.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call. Commissioner Pollan?
Deputy Councilman Matthew Gudrowski, briefly, can we ask for pull a comment on this item?
Absolutely. Let's open the public hearing on this item. Do we have any public comments, as far as you know, Julia?
I'm looking in our attendees area if any members of the public that are on the Zoom wish to provide comments, please do so by using the raise hand feature. There is a button at the bottom of your screen. It appears everyone's connected via computer and you can raise your hand and we would go ahead and call upon you. And I am not seeing any hands being raised at this time, Chair Pernell.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment on this item then and bring it back to the commission. I believe we have a first and a second.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Chair Pernell?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Agenda Item 3, Director's Report. We'll turn it over to you.
And pardon me, Chair Pernell, let's just confirm that we have the meeting properly noticed today.
Oh, yeah. And do we have a determination of legal notice?
Legal notice has been determined on each matter on the agenda.
Great, thank you, Jim. Now moving on to our director's report.
Good morning, madam chair, members of the planning commission. There is no director's report today, but I would ask if the planning commission could move matters from staff to this to this location in the agenda.
Any objections to that, commissioners? Seeing none, let's please move Agenda Item 7 to right now. The floor is yours, Director.
Thank you very much. I would like to recognize James Feenan, who is our Commission Services Supervisor. He is retiring as of tomorrow, and before you, you have a resolution that I would like to read into the record. The resolution of the Mendocino County Planning Commission expressing thanks and appreciation to James Feenan. Whereas James Feenan has served in various public service positions for 37 years in multiple county, state, and city jurisdictions, and whereas he has served as the Commission Services Supervisor for the Planning Commission since April of 2019, and whereas he has supported seven hearing bodies and commissions over his time with the department, and whereas he has guarded the printer regularly to the dismay of all other staff to make sure hearing packets are mailed on time, and whereas he has hounded senior staff on numerous occasions to make sure they finish their reviews to ensure publication deadlines are met, and whereas he has fielded numerous phone calls from angry members of the public and has assisted them in a professional and courteous manner even when being yelled at, and whereas he has survived two directors and trained multiple assistants throughout his tenure with the department, and whereas he has, he adjusted to virtual meetings as a result of COVID-19 and became the in-house expert on Zoom streaming and virtual meeting procedures, and where he has persevered on the preparation of chair scripts for virtual meetings and now receives no edits from senior staff, and he has navigated through wild and domestic animals, winter snows, and occasional rainstorm, and icy roads from Lake County to Ukiah just to make it to work every day, and whereas he has always been willing to make the coffee run for the office knowing some staff might not survive the day without the necessary endorphin boost, and whereas he has been a dedicated and devoted public servant and has served this county faithfully. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Mendocino County Planning Commission hereby sincerely and publicly says thank you for three years of service on behalf of the citizens of Mendocino County, and two, that the Mendocino County Planning Commission wishes you well on your departure from the county service and extends its best wishes for success in your retirement. And with that, Jim, I present you with this resolution, and thank you very much for your service. Thank you.
Hey, all right.
I turn it back over to the chair.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for reading that. I have no doubt that everything in there is true and correct. And there was one more whereas that could have been on there, and that was the level of patience that Jim has displayed with me when I have been delayed on getting back to him on his request. So thank you for your patience, Jim.
And Chair Pernell, we would just be looking for a motion and a second from the commission, and I believe that Jim also has prepared a few words that he would like to say as well.
Wonderful. Jim, do you want to say your words first, or shall we secure this motion for you?
I'll say my words first. I want to thank the planning commission for passing my resolution and for all the support during my time here at Planning and Building. I want to thank county administration and the Planning and Building Administration, Nash, Julia, and Adrian for all their support and guidance. I really want to thank the staff, the administrative staff, Gia, Marco, Sandra, Daphne, Danielle, Debbie, Tammy, Mark, and Albert, and especially Taylor. I want to thank all the divisions in the planning and building for their cooperation, support, and enforcement and the building division. Thank you for all the staff on the coast who have worked with and for helping me learn a whole new process. I want to say thank you for my support, and I really couldn't do it without them. I support staff and G and R. And thank you for all the different commissions I have worked with on different committees, including the BID, MHRB, LUCK, ARC subdivision committee, coastal permitting administration, and the zoning administrator. I also want to say a great big thank you to the clerk of the board staff for all their help and guidance during my time as commissioner of services. Little did I know when I retired from the courts that I'd be working in planning and building at Mendocino County. I'm so glad I had the chance to work with such a great team. Thanks to everyone, and I'll miss everybody.
And now he has to make it through one more planning commission hearing before we send him off into retirement.
Quite a way to go out. Okay, so I think we're looking for a motion on this.
I'll make a motion to, let me read what it is on number seven. Jim, for recognizing James Feenan for his 30 years of service, but his three years as a planning commission supervisor. I'll second that motion and just say I'm sad I never get to meet you in person.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, and I'd also just like to give a shout out and say happy retirement and good luck to you.
Thank you. And Chair Pernell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Yes, and Jim, I just want to, I remember when the first day you arrived and I, you were always really calm and positive and really made it much easier when we needed information. You always got back to us. So have a lot of fun in this next round of your life.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
And with that, that concludes matters from staff.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we are now moving on to Agenda Item 4, Matters from the Public, Public Expression. Members of the public are welcome to address the Planning Commission on items not listed on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking action on matters not on the agenda. Individuals wishing to address the Planning Commission under matters from the public may do so via email, telephone, or Zoom. For information on each of these methods, call the Planning and Building Department at 707-234-6650 or visit mendocino county.org/government/planning-buildings-services-meeting-agendas. All correspondence will be attached to the item and made available online on the Planning Commission Agenda page. If any members of the public logged into Zoom, into the Zoom meeting, wish to speak under public expression and you have not completed the telecomment form, please use the raise hand feature to allow staff to add you to the meeting. Instructions for using the raise hand feature are found on the agenda for this meeting. Julia, do we have, or Jim, do we have any requests for telecomment under public expression today?
Do you have any telecomment?
No requests for telecomment, and I'm looking in our attendees area. I am not seeing any hands raised at this time. So again, if you wish to provide comment during public expression, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom page. And I am still not seeing any hands raised.
Thank you for that. Agenda Item 5, Consent Calendar. We have none, so we are now moving on to 6A, Case R 2019-0012. And with that, I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chair Pernell. Julia Crogg, Assistant Director. So before diving into this specific application, I thought it would be helpful for the commission to review some of the regulatory background that has sort of led to this type of application being filed. So there's more details within the staff report, which is on pages two through four of the staff report for this particular item. And I do want to note this background does also apply to the next item on your agenda, as these are both cannabis accommodation districts. So starting back at the very beginning, in 2017, the Board of Supervisors adopted ordinance number 4381, which added regulations for the cultivation of cannabis within Mendocino County. Associated with the adoption of that ordinance was a mitigated negative declaration for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Over the last five years, the Board of Supervisors has made several amendments to the regulations, including some that have come before the Planning Commission as well. When the Board of Supervisors initially adopted the chapters both 10A17 and 20.242, the regulations included what is known as the sunset provision, which requires that cultivation sites within residential areas with small parcel sizes were relocated out of these areas after a period of time. For this particular area, the sunset date is June 30th of 2022, so that is June of this year. The Board of Supervisors, when they made this sunset provision, was generally finding that commercial cultivation of cannabis was incompatible in denser residential neighborhoods. However, in December 2018, the Board did adopt an ordinance, ordinance number 4420, creating two types of overlay or combining districts with corresponding new chapters within the zoning code. Chapter 20.118 was created for cannabis accommodation combining districts to support continued operation of existing cultivation sites where it was appropriate for that neighborhood. The Board really understood that there could be denser residential neighborhoods where commercial cultivation of cannabis was desired and was appropriate for that neighborhood. In addition, the Board adopted cannabis prohibition combining district in chapter 20.119, which was intended to prohibit new commercial cannabis use and would end existing permitted current commercial cannabis cultivation use within those areas. There were several potential CA and CT, so CA meaning cannabis accommodation and CT meaning cannabis prohibition districts that were considered by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors during 2018. As part of that, they actually considered two cannabis accommodation districts within the Mitchell Creek area, the area where this application before you today is located. Of those analyzed as prospective accommodation districts, the Mitchell Creek North proposal encompassed parcels that are included within this rezon request. And you can see the previous, the 2018 layout as compared to the current application in the attachment within your packet for project locations of how the map is labeled. As directed by the Board of Supervisors, community input was critical to informing staff and the Planning Commission's recommendations to the Board on whether or not these cannabis accommodation districts were appropriate. The consulting firm that was hired was Michael Baker International, and they held a number of community meetings. They sent out a series of community surveys, both internet-based and post-mail, and were really trying to gauge landowner support for this type of district. As is detailed further in the staff report and also attachment N to the current staff report in front of you, the Mitchell Creek North approval rate was 10%, and the Mitchell Creek South was 33%. And as a result, staff recommended against establishment of the Mitchell Creek North and the Mitchell Creek South combining district. Now, that's sort of the history that led to the creation of the zoning code chapters, and now I'm going to talk a little bit about the cannabis accommodation combining district chapter, what it does and sort of the criteria that surrounds it. So in regards to the requirements of the cannabis accommodation combining district, here's a couple highlights for you. Those CA districts must be proposed at a neighborhood or community scale and consist of a minimum of 10 parcels. They may be initiated by one or more property owners within the boundaries of the proposed district. There must, the applications must include evidence of support for the proposed accommodation district by more than 60% of the affected owners within the district, and the affected owners are the property owners within the district, not necessarily surrounding the district. It is the people that are actually within the proposed district. As a result of a cannabis accommodation district is approved, the sunset provision for residential areas is suspended. There are various cannabis cultivation permit types that can be permitted. These include the cottage small outdoor, cottage small indoor, artificial light, and then also the cottage small mixed light. And if located within an approved accommodation district, they are not subject to the two-acre minimum lot size requirement that currently is the regulation that affects those. Within an accommodation district, property line setbacks are reduced to 20 feet and can be reduced further with the approval of an administrative permit. The setback from an occupied residential structure on an adjacent property can be reduced to 20 feet with the approval of an administrative permit. And then once a cannabis accommodation district is established, it is ineligible to be repealed or amended for a period of 10 years after it's adopted. So cannabis accommodation districts are rezon applications, so they are handled pursuant to chapter 20.212 of the zoning code related to amendments, alterations, and changes in districts, and are held to the same standards as other rezon applications. In addition to the previously noted specific characteristics of accommodation districts, these districts, like all other zoning districts, are an exercise of the county's police power over land uses and development, and are intended to protect health, safety, and welfare. The rezoning of property is a legislative act, and zoning regulations and decisions must bear a substantial relationship to public health, safety, morals, or general welfare, and not be arbitrary or irrational. I'd like to pause there and see if the commission has any questions about that regulatory background before I go into discussing this specific application.
Thank you, Julia. Any questions from the commission? Looks like we don't have any.
It's pretty clear. I guess I had one question, Julia. Do you feel like there's any bearing on this with the recent board decisions on cultivation permits that were then sort of stopped in their tracks because of the? the referendum?
Um, no. So with the referendum that happened, that really related to phase three of cannabis cultivation, which would be for new cultivation sites. The cannabis accommodation districts are really related to sites that are preexisting. And actually, the rural residential two acre zoning is not even included in allowable districts for phase three cultivation.
Yeah, that's what I was remembering. Okay, thanks.
Of course. Okay, so now going into this particular item today. So rezon 2019-0012 is a rezon request to create a cannabis accommodation combining district of 16 parcels to facilitate greater flexibility in the development standards related to cannabis cultivation for existing commercial cannabis cultivation sites and suspend the sunset provision for residential districts to facilitate the continued operation. The proposed 16 parcel district that's before you today is approximately 44 acres in size. Eight parcels within the proposed district are between one and three acres in size. Only three parcels are below the required two acre minimum for cannabis cultivation eligibility. Four parcels are greater than three acres, including a 10 acre parcel. The area is primarily residential in nature and zoned rural residential, and they are developed in that manner. So they are primarily developed with single-family homes, ancillary development like garages, shops, and utility infrastructure. The entirety of the proposed cannabis accommodation combining district for this application is located in the rural residential land use classification and zoning district and has a two acre minimum parcel size. Now, the two acre minimum parcel size in Mendocino County is actually 80,000 square feet. We use the Mendocino acre, so saying 40,000 square feet is an acre for this particular area. So the minimum parcel size is 80,000 square feet. Staff finds that the proposed cannabis accommodation district aligns with the intent of the rural residential zoning designation and land use classification as parcels within the proposed district are developed with residential uses and ancillary development, and the code does allow for limited commercial activity, cottage industry. These are permissible with the approval of additional permits. So I do want to note that the cottage industries that are allowed in the rural residential two acre minimum district are cottage industries limited. So those are subject to stricter standards than the cottage industries in general, primarily due to the zoning districts that they're allowed within and the average parcel size of those districts. So staff has reviewed, oh, and I'm sorry, I see we just lost Commissioner Paulin, it looks like. Rejoining, I'm going to pause. Okay, good. Got Commissioner Paulin back.
Sorry, my internet got weird.
No problem, just making sure. So did not miss any of the presentation yet. So staff has reviewed the project for consistency with general plan policies and have identified a couple principles and policies that are pertinent to the Planning Commission's consideration of this application. I will say, you know, these general plan policies that staff has identified, we have not necessarily determined that the application is incompatible with these, but we have given some of our thoughts for consideration of the Planning Commission within our staff report. So the general plan promotes employment opportunities within proximity to residential communities, but only when those employment opportunities are consistent with local community needs and environmental constraints. The two policies that staff really analyzed within the staff report were policy DE 49 and DE 51. And staff has some concerns regarding the rezon's consistency with these policies, which is further detailed within the staff report. With regards to policy DE 49, staff is concerned that the economic opportunity afforded by these cannabis accommodation districts may be contrary to the character of the community area and may conflict, create a conflict among the land uses if it were to be allowed. With regards to policy DE 51, the location of the proposed cannabis accommodation district is at the terminus of what is considered the Mitchell Creek area. This would require that traffic associated with cannabis cultivation activities within the proposed district would traverse through the entire residential neighborhood before reaching the destination. Employees and or owners of the sites within the proposed accommodation district would have to traverse approximately two miles of roads through residential areas before reaching the subject site. Staff finds that the allowance for continued commercial cannabis activities within the proposed accommodation district has the potential to disrupt the residential character of the neighborhood. So now staff next really looked at the consistency of the proposed accommodation district with the requirements of chapter 20.118, which is the chapter related to establishment of accommodation districts. So with regards to the compliance of the proposed CA district with the requirements to establish such a district, we've identified a couple areas of concern. So I do want to note that the district meets the base requirement of being proposed with a minimum of 10 parcels. Here we have 16 parcels are proposed. And at the time of filing, had 75% landowner support. However, I do want to note that as of June 2021, the landowner support within the district dropped, dropped below the required 60% to 50%. However, I do want to note that given the wording of this section of code, that alone is not a disqualification of the application. In terms of the cannabis accommodation district, the chapter 20.118 also requires that the district be proposed at a neighborhood or community scale. Staff has included within the staff report two definitions related to community and neighborhood. And you can see those are from Maryam Webster because we do not have those definitions within our general plan or within our zoning code. So in terms of the neighborhood or community scale, staff does not believe that the proposed accommodation district meets either of these requirements. Based upon the definitions we included, the proposed district leaves out areas that would reasonably need to be included to encompass a coherent community or neighborhood. The proposed district has a contiguous area of 13 parcels that you can see on Shane Drive, and then also includes three parcels that sort of trail off to the west of those other 13 parcels. In staff's review, there are at least seven other parcels located along Shane Drive that were not included in the proposed accommodation district. And the other three parcels have, appear to have no direct connection to or relationship with the Shane Drive parcel. They take access off of completely different streets. And in order to physically walk the proposed 16 parcel district, one must physically leave the district in order to do so. The shape of the proposed accommodation district, in staff's opinion, cannot be said to include all relevant properties that would be reasonably part of the community or neighborhood. In, in our review, staff has really looked at what would be considered the neighborhood. And at minimum, we think that would include all parcels with frontage along Turner Road, Shane Drive, Emerald Drive, and Amethyst Drive. This is supported by the fact that these areas would take access through portions of the proposed accommodation district, particularly sites on Emerald Drive and Amethyst Drive, which all have a single access point that would be through the proposed accommodation district. It appears that this area comprises a small subset of what is generally referred to as the Mitchell Creek area, and all access from the proposed accommodation district and main county roads and state highways will travel through the remainder of the Mitchell Creek area. So as is noted further in the staff report, staff, when looking at the layout, the shape and size of the district, believes that the district may have been gerrymandered to include only select properties in order to meet the requisite 60% landowner support at the time of application. Now, I do want to note gerrymandering is most commonly used to discuss drawing of electoral boundaries for political gain. But it does appear that this district was drawn in such a manner to exclude certain properties so that the district could meet the base requirement for support in order to file the accommodation district application. By not including parcels that reasonably would be part of a community or neighborhood, the boundaries of the proposed district become less rational and appear to be arbitrarily set to meet the county code's court requirement. Approving a district with an arbitrary or irrational shape introduces a concern that the county may be using its zoning power in a way that does not bear a substantial relationship to public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. For these reasons, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend denial of the application to the Board of Supervisors, noting that CECL does not apply to projects which a public agency rejects or disapproves. However, in the event that the Planning Commission wishes to recommend approval of the application, staff has included an alternate resolution and the appropriate documentation pursuant to CECL. In this case, that is an addendum to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration. That concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions of the commission.
Thank you, Julia. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Jones?
I think Chair Weideman was first.
Okay.
Or Vice Chair, sorry.
Commissioner Weideman? I think you're on mute still.
Okay. On, on the site plan of this district, the three smaller parcels near Amethyst Drive, I know that area pretty well there. Were they originally part of the first application? I can compare maps in a minute, but that's one question. And because they're not, you know, because you have to make a left from Turner to get on Amethyst, and then to get to the INC, the Incorporated SC and A parcel in the back, you have to then go off another road to get to that. Is that what you're referring to, Jewel? Is that what you're referring to, Julia?
Yeah, so here I've put up the map of what was the previous Mitchell Creek North proposed accommodation district. You can see that is highlighted in green. And this proposed district is this district here.
Right.
And you can see that this is the Shane Drive area, the Shane Drive parcels, the road comes through here.
Right.
And then these are the parcels that sort of trail off to the west, as staff was noting. And in order to actually access these three parcels, you must leave the district and come out onto Turner Road and then come down a different road to access those areas.
Right. And it goes to Amethyst Site, I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, so I have a question about this also. There is no minimum size on, I mean, it just, this seems like a very small district to me. Is there no minimum size of what a district should be in the ordinance?
There is no minimum size within the district other than noting that it has to be a minimum of 10 parcels.
Okay. And then I guess I have a question about the staff report, and that is and I recognize that you focused primarily on the issues with conformance with the cannabis overlay ordinance. And I'm curious why you didn't address some of the concerns that were addressed in some of the attached letters around issues of safety, more issues of compatibility with the neighborhood than with the legality of the district vis a vis the cannabis ordinance itself.
Sure, so I can speak to, well, you know, obviously, when we prepare a project for hearing, staff is preparing their staff report before sending out a public notice. So we receive comment letters after that time. So it's challenging for staff to be able to analyze based upon comment letters provided within the staff report as we haven't received that information as of yet. As you see within the staff report, we did look back to the correspondence that was provided in 2018 when the county did the initiated rezon request. But we don't necessarily want to rely fully upon that because that is not necessarily for the application in front of you today. That it was speaking to a larger proposed district in 2018 and not necessarily this smaller district. So while we did use some of that information to help inform the character of the community and general desires of the community, we really couldn't go, you know, deeply into using those as reasons to address this particular application as it really, we would want it to be specific to the application in front of you.
Thank you, that makes sense.
And I do just want to note for the benefit of the commission, if you didn't, I hope you saw that last night. We did send you, the applicant has requested a continuance on this item. So I do want to make sure that you are aware of that before we go too much further as well. And they did detail the reasons for their requested continuance within that letter.
Let's, let's go ahead and take any questions from Commissioner Paulin. And then just for the record, Julia, if you could outline those reasons, that would be helpful. But first, let's take questions from Commissioner Paulin.
Julia, just beating you to the punch, I just wanted to make sure that we're addressing the process and procedural questions before we got into the nitty gritty. I guess I would like to hear from you, Julia, on that request for continuation. I mean, it did come in last night and looked as if it was received by your office yesterday. I noted one of the reasons for the requested continuation was a purported lack of adequate notice to the applicant. And I'd be curious to hear your response on that point. And I'm also just curious, that it seemed like the other large request in that request for continuation was that there was a desire for some sort of additional polling of the neighborhood to determine the actual appetite for this district to go forward. And it seemed from my reading of what was in the public comments that we received so far and what we've heard from you is that there has, that amount of public input has been received and adequately addressed. So I guess I'm curious about the question of notice, and I'm curious about how solid we feel like our senses of the public sentiment for this project.
So I'll start with the notice question. So in terms of legal notice, I've looked at all of the adjacent labels and the notices that we sent. And we did send notice to the property owner, as well as adjacent landowners, as well as published notice in the newspaper of general circulation, in this case, but, excuse me, in this case, the Fort Greg Advocate. And that was published a minimum of 10 days in advance of the hearing. And then, I'm sorry, your second question related to the, the concerns of the public comment letters?
Yeah, well, the applicant's attorney stated that one of the reasons for require or for requesting a continuation was so that a poll could be taken of the neighborhood to really accurately assess whether or not there was support or, yeah, whether there was support for this type of a combining district. And again, from my reading of the record so far, from the public comments that have been received and from the comments that I've heard from you, it sounds as if that issue has been addressed and that there is a fairly clear understanding of sort of the level of support in the 60% threshold, whether or not that's met or not. And I'm just curious if my reading is correct of that.
And so I can speak from a staff perspective, you know, certainly how we sort of are soliciting public comment is when we send out those adjacent landowner notices to folks. I really don't want to rely upon what was done in 2018 for the Mitchell Creek North larger district because again, that is an entirely different application, a larger area. It was really provided in this report to give a little context and history. So that way, the commission knew what, you know, some of the past history on here as that is expressed in public comments that you see before you as well. And but we, you know, when we send out that legal notice, that is the county really requesting input from the local community, giving them an opportunity to voice their concerns or their support for the project. And so I'll, I'll leave it there, and I do see that Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski has his hand raised.
Can I just run real quick follow-up, but then I'd love to go to County Counsel. Is just, have you done a numerical tally of public comment received so far? I mean, I was sort of doing a mental one as I went through in terms of the in favor and the opposed. Do we have a sense of that, and does that relate at all to the 60% threshold?
I have not done a tally myself, and it does not relate to the 60% threshold. So the 60% threshold is only for those individuals that are within the proposed district. And as I noted during my staff presentation, that landowner support has dropped to 50% as of June of this year. And you do have public comment letters posted for today's item from members within the district, some of whom have either, did not provide support originally or who have withdrawn their support since the original filing of the application.
Thank you.
Let's go to County Counsel.
Thank you, Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski. I do think that some of Commissioner Paulin's questions are, you know, I see Ms. Austin's hand raised in the waiting room. I think some of those issues are best raised and discussed or why they're asking for continuance by the applicant and applicant's counsel. I will note that the February 3rd meeting date had been discussed with applicant's counsel and agreed to in, I want to say late December, early January. So it was a known quantity, this was going to be the date as far as we're concerned. And secondarily, again, planning department's procedures show was mailed the address on file.
Thank you for that addition. So Commissioner Weideman and Paulin, I both, I see both of your hands up. Do you have more that you'd like to say? Okay, Commissioner, okay, all right, hands are down, great, just checking in on everybody. So So Deputy County Counsel, would this be an appropriate time for the commission to discuss the request for continuance and to make a decision on that?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, yes.
Okay. So commissioners, let's open this up as to whether or not we want to entertain the request for continuance. I know myself, I want to hear a little bit more about the rationale for that, especially because February 3 was already, you know, agreed to by the applicant and the request came in so late. And I think my question, either for the applicant or the applicant's attorney, would be what additional information might be made available at a later date that would be informative in us making our decision? And I do see Commissioner Jones' hand up as well.
Well, I guess, since you started, Chair Purnell, with a question, maybe we should have the applicant's attorney answer that question before I make a comment.
Okay. So let's invite either the applicant or the attorney to join us.
I have brought Ms. Gina Austin over here into the meeting. And Gina, I see you've unmuted, thank you. Please just state your name for the record.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Gina Austin, and I am the representative for the applicant here. And I completely understand your concerns. First, let me talk, notice was not, the comment with regard to notice was more that the normal process with the county has been, hey, we're getting ready to go to hearing. Here's the draft staff report, here we're going to go. There's a lot of direct communication with staff. And in this instance, there was none. There was communication with County Counsel that they agreed that they would get it on a hearing, no later, they hoped, than February 3. But, and the applicant has represented to me that the PO box that is the address on file for this did not receive this notice at all. I know the post office is having extended delays, I don't know if that's the reason why. But it wasn't to say that staff did not send out notice, it's just that the process that normally occurs before a hearing did not occur in this instance. And so without that information, the applicant did not go out door to door, like she had intended to do, to see what was going on. The last polling that we have is June of 20, what year are we, 22? June of 2021. So at that point in time, there had been a drop in support. There's been changes of ownership within what is being proposed. There has been changes of ownership on the neighboring properties. We noticed from the, and I noticed from the last time this commission had a hearing on a rezone, and I only noticed it yesterday, that there was a lot of questions from Commissioner Wedeman regarding, what about the people next to the zone? What, you know, do they, do they care? We had never asked any of those people because they weren't part of the zone, and we hadn't been direct in that. So we want to go out and ask the neighboring people. I understand, and I'll bargain, they're not part of the people that count towards the 60%. So we want to do that, that's number one. And number two is when I went through and looked at the opposition in answer to Commissioner Pollan, it is actually in favor, more in support than opposition when you do a tally. Just, but when we started looking at those people and who they are and where they are, we didn't have time, from the time those were posted, to determine whether or not they're in the district, whether they're out of the district, whether they're next to the district, whether 10 miles away in another jurisdiction. And so we want the opportunity to look at those, so that the commission has adequate information before them. Who are these people that are opposed? Where are they in relationship to the project? And what about the people that are in the district today? Some of those are absentee homeowners, meaning, you know, they're rental properties or otherwise. And so that's the purpose of the request for the continuance. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
And Ms. Austin, I just want to confirm, there's, I see that we also have the applicant, Ms. Molton, on the line as well, and I just want to confirm if there was any additional comments from the applicant's side or if you're presenting all those comments.
If Ms. Molton has, the way we figured this out, because we're not next to each other, if she had additional information that she wanted to add, she was going to raise her hand.
Okay, great, I do not see a hand raised at this time, so I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
And Julia, just so you know, I'm not seeing, I'm looking, but I'm not seeing Ms. Molton, so I'm not going to see if she raises her hand. So if you see that, be sure to let me know.
Absolutely, I'm keeping my eye on it.
Great, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. So I feel a little bit awkward about this process because we're allowing the applicant to talk during discussion about whether or not we would allow a continuance and not hearing from anybody in the neighborhood, so it feels a little bit one-sided to me. I also am conscious of the fact that probably there are people in the waiting room that are wanting to speak. And I think it's important that people be heard at a time when a hearing has been noticed because they've probably taken time out of work or out of their schedule to participate in this. So I do think that following our normal process is important. You know, if people have a PO box that they don't check, I don't think that's really on the county. It sounds like the attorney, our attorney talked with their attorney, and everybody knew that the February 3 meeting was going to happen. I suspect that what actually happened is that a lot of letters came in opposition, and that made the applicant uncomfortable. And so they want to rally their base, and it's pretty clear that they did rally their customers because there's quite a number of letters from their customers. So to me, this feels a little bit like an end run, but I'm really interested in hearing what other commissioners have to say about it because I also am open to changing my mind.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. And we, as a commission, do have the discretion to, you know, grant that request for continuance and then just, you know, be done on this item for today or to not grant that and to continue with hearing public expression on this issue. So, and I think that's what we need to determine right now, is how we would like to handle that continuance. And I do see Mr. Kudrowski's hand up. Deputy County Counsel?
Yes, sorry, Deputy County Counsel Matt Kudrowski, I was muted. I just want to note that the commission, and as has happened at the board level in the past, can also choose to hear public comment today for those who won't speak and still continue the matter to a different meeting beyond that. So there is an option to do, to hear the public comment today as well.
Great, thank you for clarifying. And like Commissioner Jones, I'm leaning towards hearing the public comment today. Commissioner Pollan?
Thank you, I guess, so, I just, again, I want to be clear on the procedural steps that we're looking at here today. If we do not continue, if we do hear this as it was originally scheduled, we would be making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, who is the ultimate decision maker on this question. Is that, that's correct, is not?
That is correct, yes. It's, so it's a report and recommendation to the board.
Right. I guess, I feel inclined to deny the recommendation or the request for continuance inasmuch that it's hard for me to see what additional information or analysis might be granted by continuing this. And as Commissioner Jones pointed out, people, I think, have been proceeding under the assumption that this would be happening today, and we have people in the waiting room, people submitted public comment for today. So I personally feel like we have the information that is present, that is necessary to make a determination. And that the applicant, as in, as much as that we're not making a final determination, the applicant, if there's additional information that needs to be gathered and presented, has that opportunity to do so before the decision-making body, the Board of Supervisors, finally takes this up. So that would be my inclination at the moment.
Commissioner Wedeman? You're muted still?
Yeah, hold on, okay. I concur with Commissioner Pollan, what he just spoke. There's, I don't really see, you know, it could keep going on and on for doing a polling. And I think it puts the burden on the district and the neighborhood to keep continuing this. As Commissioner Jones pointed out, a lot of, clearly, people in the neighborhood, they're very concerned about this issue. So I support going forward and keeping it on our agenda for today.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. So it sounds like the commission, at this point, is in consensus to deny the request for continuance. Do we need a motion on that, or may we simply continue?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, I think if we could just do a quick motion on that.
A motion, please, this is a request for a motion to deny the request for continuance.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we deny the request for the continuance of the hearing.
I'd like to second that motion.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Chair Purnell?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, so we are proceeding with this item and would like to invite the applicant to give a presentation.
Ms. Austin, would you like for me to bring over Ms. Molton as well into the meeting? I see we have a couple folks signed up that I believe may be associated with the application. And if they can just identify themselves, I'll go ahead and pull them over for the presentation.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
You can pull them over. We were not prepared to talk to this issue, this particular item, because we were requesting a continuance. So it will be brief, and I do not know if anybody else has anything to say. We are primarily focused on the Franklin Street application today. So perhaps we can, I don't know if the chair even has the discretion to do this, if you want to move them in order and hear this one second.
W County Counsel, will you weigh in on that, please?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, I think the chair has the discretion to move agenda items around. Typically, do it mid-item, but I'll leave that to the chair's discretion.
Okay, well, since it sounds like there is no issue with moving items around mid-item, let's go ahead and honor the applicant's request to do so. So we're going to put 6A on pause and move to item 6B, give me just a minute. Case R 2019-0013. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Good morning, commissioners, Russ Ford, Planning Staff. Yeah, so this project is very similar to the previous one. We'll just kind of hit some highlights for the sake of brevity here. This is Project R 2019, 0013, which is a rezone request to adopt a cannabis accommodation district over 10 parcels in the Mitchell Creek area, approximately four miles southeast of Fort Bragg on the west side of Franklin Road. Julia already provided the regulatory history for cannabis, so just, I'll just touch real quick on the application background of this particular application. It was initially submitted in October, October 30th of 2019. CA applications require a minimum of 60% buy-in, of course, from the proposed district. This application contained approvals in seven of the 10 lots for 70%. In December of 2019, the project was placed on hold at the request of the applicant to allow time to submit additional materials for consideration. The project remained on hold until approximately February of 2021, at which time the additional materials were submitted. Staff picked up the application again, and referrals were sent out in March. So the original project planner for this was Siobhan Holm. I believe she's done a great job with the staff report, so I won't go through that in detail. But there are a few key issues with the project that we'll highlight here for the purposes of discussion. Again, this is all very similar to the previous project. First is the project consistency. The parcels in the proposed district are zoned rural residential. The establishment of a CA district can be compatible with a rural residential zone that is discretionary. General Plan Policy DE 49 seeks to expand economic opportunities that respect the individual character of each community area. Similarly, Policy DE 51 encourages home occupations and cottage industries in conjunction with residential uses when limited in scope and compatible residential or neighborhood character. Cottage industries and home occupations that grow beyond site or building limitations or become incompatible with the neighborhood should be relocated to appropriate lease-owned property. Comments submitted by the community suggest that the site is indeed viewed as incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and that there is a strong desire to limit the allowable commercial uses within this residential district and to allow the sunset provision to take effect, moving the existing operation to another location. Secondly, the location is not ideal. The proposed district and the existing cultivation site within it are roughly in the center of the Mitchell Creek neighborhood, requiring customers and clients to travel through the surrounding residential sites when traveling through it. This concern has also been mentioned in several of the public comments. Finally, staff has significant concerns about the proposed configuration of the district, once again. It contains 10 parcels, which is the minimum amount required by the ordinance. Yet it seems to exclude parcels in the immediate area that are similar in terms of size, zoning, and land use for reasons unknown to staff. No justification for parcels being included or excluded has been provided, forcing staff to surmise that the configuration of the district is really just an attempt to meet the county code support requirement. Zoning is, of course, a policy decision on part of the county, and consideration of the effects of those policies is important. So ultimately, though the proposed district does seem to meet the minimum requirements of Section 20.118.010 regarding the creation of CA districts, the concerns cited here, as well as the additional analysis present in the staff report, lead staff to believe that the adoption of the proposed CA district may not be a good fit for this particular community and that the district may not meet the county's requirements for neighborhood or community configuration, and therefore, staff is recommending denial of the product. This concludes staff comments, and we're available for questions and discussion.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Wedeman, Pollan, Jones? Nope, no questions for staff? Okay, very good, let's invite the applicant to give the presentation.
Okay, and I am bringing over Ms. Austin, I'm promoting her to a panelist as she has a presentation, which has been posted to the public website as well for the general public that she wishes to share on the screen today. And I'm also going to bring over Ms. Molton. And I think I've gotten everyone, Ms. Austin, if I have missed any folks from the application, please just let me know.
It looks good to me. Now, I am, again, Gina Austin, on behalf of the applicant, going to see if the share screen works.
And yes, we're seeing your screen.
Good, there we go, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's time and your consideration for moving this around and everybody working with the applicant here. My name is Gina Austin, I'm here with Brandi Molton to provide additional details and support for the project before you. And with all due respect to staff, it is our opinion that the analysis misses a few key issues related to general plan consistency in the CACD findings. Our office submitted a letter, which I see is on the website, and I believe all the commissioners have. And it provides a summary of the issues and reasons why the findings can be made. But I want to spend the next few minutes expanding on why these particular 10 parcels are exactly what the Board of Supervisors had in mind when they created a CACD or an overlay district. There was a great explanation of the history from staff of the CACD and the policies that created that over time, so I won't go through that history. Just a quick picture here of where we're talking about. Just a quick picture here of where we're talking about. I think that also was in staff's first report where you saw the big map. But here we are looking at the area that would be, is being proposed for this particular district. So I want to go through some background here as to what happened. In 19, 10 of 19, Ms. Moulton submitted her application. And in December of 19, that application was deemed complete. Then we gathered some additional information. And in May of 21, we were informed that the project would be set for hearing on June 3rd. And there was a draft staff report provided. And this is what I was referring to in terms of what we generally would see from staff with regard to, you know, right before a hearing. A few days later, the county pulled the application and the email from the then planner stated that the county had determined that it was an incomplete staff report and needed additional information about public health and safety to meet planning standards. And eight months later, here we are. So what I'd like to do is go back. Oops, how did we get here? How do we go back? What I want to do is go back to the beginning before Ms. Moulton first applied in 2019. The county had approved four CACDs out of, I believe it was six, that had been proposed by the county itself. And in 2018, they also created the opportunity for property owners to go in and do this themselves. And that is when Ms. Moulton started talking with county staff and said, okay, what do I need to do here? And the direction from staff was you need to be consistent with the general plan. You need to be consistent with the zoning district. And you need 10 properties with 60% or more support. There was never a discussion from staff, never a reference that it should be more than 10 properties or it should be 100 properties. We knew from what happened in 2018 that a large swath was not something that the community wanted. And so 10 properties was the requirement, 10 properties, what was told. The applicant went out, found 10 properties. And there was no need to look for additional parcels or to talk to additional people. I understand that staff's comments that this could be considered gerrymandering. But when you look at it from what actually happened, Ms. Moulton was told, go find 10 parcels and that would constitute an application. So she went out and found 10 parcels. And we knew with Mitchell Creek not being supported that they didn't want the whole area. The community certainly didn't want this whole area to be. So where you do is you look for an area that is consistent and say, all right, this is where we're going to submit the application. And so that's what she did. She, whoops, are we moving forward? Does it move forward? Okay, here we go. She went and found her property being the one at the bottom and went and went north, then went east, polled everybody and said, all right, do we have support? We had 70% support and went forward with the application. I think it's really important to note here that these three parcels highlighted in green, those are the only parcels that were within the original Mitchell Creek proposed zone that was denied. And every one of those parcels has support today. Every single one of them is in support of this project, would like to, or the overlay zone, and would like to see the overlay zone move forward. So the county's, like I said, only three findings that must be made in order to place here. In order to, for the findings to be made, there is no requirement. But the board certainly could have made one. That residents outside of the CACD approve the project or that everyone within the CACD approve it. The board chose not to do that. And so we have to go by the language of what they actually chose. And it would be an abuse of discretion now for this decision-making body to allow public opposition from people outside of the CACD to be utilized as a basis for a decision not to recommend approval. The only requirements are the ones that I stated above. And similar for the reasons requesting the continuance on the other item is that we don't know where all of this opposition is coming from. We know for certain that it is none of the people within this proposed CACD. So the next comment that staff had was that there is a potential, not an absolute, a potential for a general plan inconsistency. And we would argue that this is simply not the case. There are several policies that staff didn't bother to include in the staff report that this project is consistent with. For example, Policy DE 14, that rural land is intended to encourage local and small-scale farming, which is exactly what this overlay does. Staff suggests that it's potentially inconsistent with DE 49 to expand economic opportunities that respect the individual character of the community. And their reasoning is that while there isn't a specific character of the community, and that is noted in the staff report in this particular 10 parcels, back in 2018, people objected to the Mitchell Creek overlay zone and wanted to keep the area residential. As I mentioned, only three parcels of this project are within that proposed, prior proposed overlay zone. And each of these support the project. Even if we accept that people outside the overlay zone want the area to remain residential, the character of this property does not change. These properties remain residential with small, very small, no larger than 2,500 square feet cultivation facilities on it. And in fact, this particular parcel, it's maxed out at 700 square feet and would have no more than one employee. So changing the concept of residential or the community of the neighborhood simply would not occur here. The staff report also suggests that the overlay zone may possibly be inconsistent with DE 51 because the overlay is not limited in scope and has the potential to disrupt the residential neighborhood. Staff has absolutely no support for this claim. The current and historical use on at least a few of these properties has been cultivation as an accessory use, and there is no expansion of this use. There's no evidence of disruption. And in fact, as I will explain towards the end of my presentation, the initial study conducted by staff actually provides evidence of a lack of disruption. This area is exactly the type of area the board was thinking about when it adopted the overlay zone. It is right on the edge of much larger parcels that are affected by, that are not affected by the sunset clause. There is no purpose for an overlay zone over these larger parcels. It is only these smaller parcels that are affected by the sunset provision. If you eliminate the ability to create overlay zones on the outskirts of the more densely populated areas, you have eliminated the entire purpose of the overlay zone because you don't need them on the larger parcels. And it's the smaller parcels which are near these densely populated areas. So this map shows the larger parcels to the right, the smaller parcels to the left, and this particular overlay zone being right at the edge. With regard to staff's comments and the report of the shape and size, staff has stated that it must be neighborhood or community and it doesn't meet staff's definition of neighborhood or community. I call your attention to the language of the ordinance. It says that a CA combining district may range from neighborhood to community, as if these are much larger areas. But it doesn't say it has to range from that. And if the board wanted it that way, it could have drafted language that way, but it chose not to. It said, it says, it must be a minimum of 10 parcels. And in fact, when you look at staff report on the prior applications that have come before you, never has there been a discussion that these smaller overlay zones are not neighborhood or community. This is a new argument that I'm not, I don't know where it came from. But it's not a requirement of the code. It is simply a potential, a may. And I don't want to get into a discussion of what neighborhood or community means because we could be here all day. Staff used the definition from Webster's. What is important is that regardless of the definition that you apply, the code doesn't require it. And as I've mentioned, the county's own interpretation has consistently been 10 parcels. Moreover, the parcels at the east of the proposed overlay have no benefit for the overlays on, as I just mentioned. The very process of exclusion, this group, by the very process of exclusion, this is a group of people with the same interest constituting a community. The people to the left, staff has said, do not want it based on the prior studies. The people to the right don't need it. So here is a small group of people with the same interest based on staff's definition that is a community. The last issue I would like to address is with regard to the opposition and various points raised in the opposition letters. The application is not an application for cultivation permit. Rather, this is an application to allow the, allow the application for that use on the properties in this overlay zone if and only if there were prior cultivation on these parcels. The county adopted an initial study related to the original ordinance and adopted, or they conducted an initial study and adopted and mitigated negative declaration. Then for this project, they completed another initial study and determined that no significant impacts would occur from the adoption of this CACD. Therefore, the adoption of the CACD, which is the only action that's before you today, does not create impacts to water, traffic, noise, et cetera. That is what staff found in the initial study. Neither does the adoption of the overlay zone change the zoning of any property to commercial or otherwise. The initial study has the added benefit of providing you with the evidence that you need to determine that there's no inconsistency with general plan policy DE 51. We understand the community's opposition to large swaths of densely populated residential properties becoming cultivation properties and changing the character of the neighborhood. That is not what is being proposed here. The only thing that happens from the adoption of this overlay zone before you today is that anyone on one of those 10 parcels within this overlay zone who has previously cultivated may submit for an application during a short period of time to allow them to keep cultivating on that parcel in an amount of cultivation less than 2,500 square feet. Dozens of letters have been submitted, both in support and opposition of this proposed overlay. The numbers are roughly equal. None of the opposition letters, however, provide any evidence or any reasoning how these findings cannot be made. Because we believe the findings can be made and it is consistent with the general plan, the zoning district, and it does meet the requirements for the CACD, we respectfully request that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this project to the Board of Supervisors. That concludes my presentation, and I am open for questions at any time.
Great, thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, I see none. Just double checking that there are no questions. Okay. With that, let's open the public hearing on this issue. I'm gonna read the little thing about how we do public hearings in the era of Zoom. This is the point where we will address any telecommenters that have submitted their form and are waiting on the line. The clerk will read the list in order and call the next speaker. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Speakers are asked to please address their comments to the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversation with members of the audience or staff. And I would also just like to note that as you make your comments, to please address them to the item at hand, which is the creation of a cannabis combining district. In many of the letters of support that came in, there was support for a cannabis cultivation facility. And I would just simply like to note that that is not the item before us today. Yes, Commissioner Jones?
Just for clarity, also, could we ask people to speak to just this application, not to both during their comments, so that we can be clear that people are speaking to this application? Because that was a little bit confusing in the comment letters for me.
Thank you. Yes, and with that additional clarification that we are speaking to item 13 only, so application number 13. So staff, how many people do we have in queue?
Well, it looks like we have five individuals other than the representatives of the application. And I see we have Simeon Evans, who has just raised their hand. So I'm going to go ahead and bring Simeon over. And Simeon, just give me one moment here to go ahead and share my screen with the appropriate timer. So as the chair noted, there will be three minutes per person. This countdown clock, I'll start once you begin speaking. So please just start by stating your name for the record.
Hi, Simeon Evans, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. So I live near the proposed zone and I'm writing to express my support for the cannabis accommodation combining district. The Board of Supervisors had this regulation drafted to enable exceptions to the sunset provision because they saw the value of certain pre-existing small and cottage businesses being able to continue to operate and provide their benefits to their community. Ms. Moulton and her company provide many such benefits to the community, most notably employment, economic stimulus, and a service that community members from all walks of life utilize. The zone is required to have a minimum of 10 contiguous parcels. Only a 60% approval of property owners within the accommodation district is required for approval. They are not subject to approval from people outside of the zone. It is clear that the large volume of public comment is from people not only outside of the zone but living nowhere near it. Yet the board seems to be taking note of public comment received from anyone that may or may not live anywhere near the zone. There is an organized anti-cannabis group that mobilize and coordinate to oppose any and all cannabis products within the greater Fort Bragg area. And the majority of the opposed comments are from people on this list that do not live within or peripheral to the application zone. There is a 70% approval rate of the property owners within the zone, and those are the voices that should be heard. Staff are talking about gerrymandering and the shape of the product. Actually, I'm gonna scratch that. The Planning Department originally stated that this application met all of the requirements and recommended approval for this accommodation zone. I do not understand why that was reneged and changed to a recommendation for denial. Clearly, the vast majority of property owners within the zone support and approve. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So I am not seeing any other hands raised at this. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you. Let me reset the time here. And please just state your name for the record.
Hi, it's Jacob Patterson. Full disclosure, I'm a person
My apologies, Jacob. I just muted you. Can you go ahead and unmute? My apologies, and I'm gonna start your time over again. There you go.
Hi, it's just Jacob Patterson. Full disclosure, I live in Fort Bragg, not out there. And I'm not actually opposed to cannabis, although I do have some questions about this application. And I actually think everyone's comments are relevant. That's why we have public hearings. There's no such thing as a land use entitlement decision where only the property owners who are directly involved are the people you hear from. That's like saying I want to turn my house into, rezone it to be a landfill and my neighbors who aren't going to be the landfill but to be right next to it have no say in the matter. I think that line of reasoning is kind of ridiculous. But anyway, I just wanted to focus on a couple things. One, even if this application potentially was approvable and potentially could meet every single finding that would be necessary to approve it, that doesn't mean we should. There's no requirement for matters of policy to approve applications that people want for a rezoning. It's not the actual permit, as the applicant's attorney emphasized in her presentation. This is about a rezoning policy question, and I think the answer to that impacts the entire neighborhood. And some of the comment letters that I read are for people literally right on the border, like their neighbors are included in it and they're not. I think their voices should be heard as well. And they have spoken in opposition to this. There's a reason why we had a sunset provision. Unfortunately, it was extended. But this neighborhood is not a place where we have decided as a matter of policy we want these types of uses, even if they are accessory anymore. There are plenty of places where all of those activities could happen, including within the city of Fort Bragg once they get their own cultivation ordinances in order. But I just encourage the Commission to follow the staff recommendation and the majority of the comments that were on point to this actual application, which, based on my count, are definitely highly in favor of denying it. Thank you.
Okay, and so thank you, Mr. Patterson. Okay, and so I'm thinking, Mr. Patterson, I do see we have other folks on the line here. Um. If you do have a desire to provide comment on this item, if you can use the raise hand feature. That would help staff to be able to pull you over and if you're on your computer, the raise hand feature should be at the bottom of the screen. And I'm not seeing any additional hands being raised at this time. Chair Purnell, I'm unsure, um you know, I understand some folks may not understand um all of the Zoom format. I don't know if you'd like for me to run through, there's only three other names on the call at this time that haven't spoken.
Um. I don't know, why, can you just run through the Zoom protocol really quickly, just to make sure?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely, so um there is a raised hand feature at the bottom of the screen uh for individuals that are on a computer. Um if you are calling from a telephone, there is also the feature where you can utilize the star. Let me make sure I'm gonna tell you the right one, you can do star nine to raise your hand. And then star six is to unmute. And again, the raised hand icon is at the very bottom of the screen. It'll appear next to your name as well, once you have raised your hand. And I'm looking. And I do not see any hands raised at this time, so I would say then. That appears to conclude public comment.
Great, let's go ahead and close the public hearing then, and then staff, do you have any final remarks before we bring it back to the commission?
Uh no, we do not, thank you.
Okay, so we are now bringing this item back to the commission for any questions of staff or the applicant. Or just simply a discussion amongst the commission. Commissioner Wedeman, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything at this point on item thirteen.
Okay, Commissioner Jones.
I guess I have a comment, um. And maybe it's a question for staff as well. I'm struggling with this application a little bit more than the other one, and the reason I'm struggling is um. There seems to be two kind of conflicting issues within it. Um on the one hand, the ordinance requires a sixty percent approval by affected property owners for a district to be. Approvable. Um and it seems that for this application, the applicant has achieved that. On the other hand, there is this issue of um. Public resistance or disliking rezoning in a neighborhood who may not actually have property in the zone itself. And I guess you, if you could comment briefly on that question and um. And I guess my other comment that I have to make is in the future, when we have two applications like this that are so similar to each other. That hinge somewhat on public comment and participation. It might actually serve us to have them at different hearings so that. We get comment letters that are specific to a project rather than grouped to two, and so it's a little hard to know. If people are just piling on or if they really care about the specific project. I know that's a lot to ask because it's hard to schedule this stuff, but um. It is, it is just making it a little bit challenging for me to kind of. Read whether the opposition is primarily for the other um district or for both districts or. Do you get what I'm saying?
Yes, so and if I understand your your question correctly, it's essentially um. You know, the application meets the base requirement for ten parcels, the landowner's support. Um. And then concerns about how it affected the effect on the neighborhood, is that what I'm sort of understanding and that sort of juxtaposition?
Yeah, well, I'm sort of thinking about like our. Our recommendation to the board of supervisors, right? On on the one hand, they seem to meet the minimum requirements, but on the other hand, there's a lot of um neighborhood opposition to this. Essentially what's considered a rezoning. And. You know, at my time at the city of Fort Bragg as community development director, when there was a lot of opposition to a project that was a rezoning. Like we took that into consideration, no matter where those people lived, because rezoning affects. You know, a larger area, not just the property owners, and so. I guess from that perspective, it's a little bit odd to have it written into the ordinance the way that it was, because to me it creates. Um maybe confusion in the mind of the applicant, it certainly creates a little confusion in my mind. And and then having both applications at the same time, so you're not really clear if the people who are. In opposition to something are just kind of. Do you get what I'm saying, like it's a little bit more complicated than I thought at first blush and. Um you know, maybe all the property owners around this one are gung ho and supportive. Does that matter, like, so that's the question I'm asking you, and maybe you don't feel comfortable answering it, but it it is a little bit. Confused to me in that way.
So through the chair, deputy county counsel, I can try and put a response to that desire. Or some discussion to that point. The the sixty percent requirement was written in there more as a showing of support at the time of application. So that anyway, the wording of that code section is establishment maybe maybe initiated by one or more property owners. Such application shall be filed and shall be accompanied. By either a petition showing that sixty percent support or some alternative method of support. So I'm not sure that that is any way intended to limit anyone or the consideration of any comments from those around the rezoned area. I I agree that as legislative action, a rezon does affect adjacent property owners. And I don't think this can be reasonably read as saying those uh voices are intended to be silenced by. A reason application for to change a property to industrial. I will, you know, the commission and board, but reasonably take into account uh comments from adjacent property owners. It's why adjacent property owners also get notice of the application as well. Uh and it also gets published in the newspapers, various methods to achieve uh that notice of the item. So I I think in the context that we're talking about here, that was more of a threshold requirement written into the code. Cause I believe going back to the twenty eighteen process, the board wanted to see that this was a a if not unified community. At least a community with majority support of this property owners, what's going on at the time application. So it wasn't getting to a process where uh the application had almost no support, we're going in it goes through the entire process to get to the commission and board. So I think there's it it different ways to repeat that language in terms of how it affects uh the comments for this item.
Thanks, that was very helpful. And Commissioner Jones, did you have anything else to add?
No, that was just very helpful, um. So I guess from my perspective, I I feel like the county is not going in the two acre. Um cannabis direction. And I'm very concerned about a rezon that would. Essentially permanently allow um cannabis in such. Small pockets in a large residential neighborhood where it's pretty clear. Overall, the residents of this neighborhood are not in favor of this as an activity. Um I do respect that, you know, cannabis does provide jobs in our community. And I also um am fully aware that this applicant has been struggling to get their. Application heard. Um and that time is of the essence for them. Um that said, and you know, I do appreciate that it's probably not that easy to move your cannabis operation to somewhere else. Um. I am inclined to vote against or to send a recommendation to deny this application to the board of supervisors. That's just kind of where I am right now, really curious to hear what the other commissioners think.
Commissioner Pollan.
I just had a quick question for staff, um and I think I've heard this already, but just. In in as much as it's been raised in public comment and by the applicant's attorney. Um in terms of the rationale for the recommendation of approval of this. Uh rezon at one point and then for changing that recommendation to denial at this point.
Sure, I can speak to what happened, the the staff report that's attached um through the. The applicant's attorney that's part of their public comment letter, that was a draft staff report that had been sent to the applicant to verify some of the content. In terms of the description of the district and the layout, however, that report was still under review by senior staff. And was not a final staff report. Um so as a result of that review by senior staff, um you'll see that now we do have a final report which has been published for today's item.
So there wasn't necessarily some change on the ground or change in policy, it was just that what was presented initially was not. Was not a finalized report.
Yes, it was a draft report, that's evidenced by the fact there's still red text in it that says to be. Uh verified before publishing and it's unsigned, all final reports are signed by the planner.
Okay, thank you, my only question.
Commissioner Wedeman, I see your hand up.
Uh yes, um I just wanted to comment, I I wanted to thank our uh counsel for clarifying the sixty percent in favor. It's part of the whole application process. The. Because this is a zoning, a rezoning issue, I do feel um. The neighborhood. Has a right to give information. And. I know that the process has been, the whole cannabis process has been very convoluted and very difficult. But I wanna go back as a commissioner, and this is about zoning and rezoning. And I have concerns as many of the neighbors around uh. Making this zoning rezoning be a cannabis, um one would call it a a zone. And I think even if you're not just contiguous to the ten parcels. You are affected by something like this, your property values are affected, your neighborhood's affected. Who's gonna purchase those properties in the future? And therefore, I I guess it's about the zoning that I I get very conservative about these things. Because it's not going backwards, right? And. When you're dealing with cannabis. It's very difficult, I know, we know, we have a lot of mom and pop operations, we see that. Um but once you put it into a commercial venue, a legal commercial venue. It offers a different flavor. To. The neighborhood. Once you think you bought into a residential, now it's commercial. And um. So I um am. Have concerns to uh support this and I'm leaning more to deny this rezoning on this uh. Uh application number thirteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wedeman. Um. I'm also leaning towards denying this application and and I'd like to just explain a little bit of my perspective on it. And I'd like to just again say that so many of the letters of support that came in. Were actually not for the creation of a cannabis combining district, but these letters really spoke to. The merit of this business. And even in some cases, the merit and like the quality of product that this business provides to the marketplace. And so I just wanna really suggest that um. You know, I I believe those people, that this is a great business and that they're providing a good, clean product. And yet that's not the issue before us today. The the issue before us today is whether or not this is an appropriate location for the creation of a cannabis combining district. Um this is not a pro or con cannabis issue, this is a zoning issue, this is a land use issue. Is this the appropriate location for cannabisness? In Mendocino County. And I think the reason why this has become such a difficult issue. Is, you know, prior to cannabis being regulated via ordinance, but prior to it being a zoning and land use issue, it was a legal issue. And it was primarily enforced through the sheriff's department. And so we have wound up with cultivators who have been attempting to jump through all the hoops and be compliant. And have done a great job at doing so and and you know, at much risk to their to their own business and livelihoods. And and I appreciate those people trying to go through the system. And yet, as the laws change, the ordinances change, this has become regulated as more of a land use and zoning issue. It creates these inherent conflicts about these people who have been permitted or licensed. Now wind up in a sunset zone and have to move. And it's not a comfortable position, I I don't even think it's comfortable for any of us commissioners to wrestle with this one. Cause these are people that have, you know, done the right thing all the way along. But they also knew that this district was gonna sunset and that they needed to move. And I just, I just hope that they've made uh. Other arrangements for their business, cause this, again, this is not about the merit of the business. Or the quality of the product, this is about, is this an appropriate location? And I'm in agreement with the staff report that although the requirements for the application were met. The findings, there's a strong case that the findings to approve this application cannot be met. So that's my comments on that, and I wanna give just a last chance to any commissioners who wanna speak before I ask for a motion. Okay, seen no other comments, do we have a motion?
Yes, the commissioner from the fourth district where this project lies, I'd like to move um that the. Planning commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission, county of Mendocino, state of California, making its report and recommendation to the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors. Recommending the denial of the rezoning of certain parcels to create a commercial cannabis accommodating district. R dash two nineteen dash zero zero one three.
Second that motion.
We'll call vote, Commissioner Pollan.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman.
Yes.
Chair Purnell.
Yes.
Motion passes for denial four zero.
Okay, who's who's ready for a five minute break? Okay, so the time is ten forty five, um I'll see you about, it's ten forty six, so I'll see you back at uh ten fifty one.
Okay.
Am I unmuted?
Yeah, you are. And you also still have the panelist link. So if there was anything you desire to share on the screen, you have that ability.
Oh, there's nothing I, I need to share on the screen at this time. I just, I have a few comments. It definitely won't be as long as last time because I've, I've covered most of those issues. But I do appreciate the opportunity to talk on, on this issue. Again, my name is Gina Austin on behalf of the applicant, Brandy Molton. And, and I don't expect to change the commission's position as to, you know, what should happen in these smaller districts. And, and that's not my, my goal right here. I want to talk a little bit about public opposition. And, and there's, there's a lot of, Commissioner Jones, you had some very good points. I think the county council had very good points in terms of, you know, there was a minimum requirement to go in, but, but the community does matter. And I'm not suggesting in any way that the community does not matter in terms of their voices as to what they want to see in their neighborhoods. What I'm suggesting is that there should be different weight given to the community who lives closer to the area than the weight given to the people who live in the city of Fort Bragg, San Francisco. I mean, the entire country could comment on this, but we would give, just out of a matter of principle, a different amount of weight to the people who are closely affected than the weight to the people who have a general interest. And, and that is my point with regard to the community input. And, and frankly, the reason for my request for a continuance, because of massive letter writing campaigns that can be done by general opposition, the applicant and my office has zero idea whether the people who are in opposition to this project that wrote in letters are near, in, one parcel away, 10 parcels away, in another city, in another county. We just don't know. We did a preliminary analysis and most of these people seem to be miles away, not within this residential community or neighborhood, regardless of how you defined it, with the exception of maybe one or two. And you heard in the last hearing on the last matter, and I understand each project is judged on its own merits. I'm not suggesting that you combine them, and I understand the confusion. And Commissioner Jones, I am with you on that. It was confusing to see what people were actually opposed to. But the only person who spoke at the last hearing was Jacob Patterson, who does not live anywhere near this project and is actually opposed to the applicant's project in another jurisdiction. So I find it, you know, unsettling that the commission was unwilling to continue this matter for us to get greater comment, that there were people on, that were here, ready to speak, that didn't speak. And maybe they only want to speak to this one. So maybe I'm wrong, and that's entirely a possibility. But I, I just wanted to say that I do agree that the way, the community does matter, but we're not going to know that information, at least for this hearing. And, and hopefully by the time this goes to the board, we'll have the opportunity to do that. But I do encourage in the, and in future projects, there to be given weight to the, the properties that are opposed, that are imminently affected and the properties that are opposed that are not so much effective, as well as the ones that are in favor. And I also agree with Chair Purnell that there's, there's a difference between the, the people who are supporting just the business as compared to people who are supporting the overlay district. And there is a, it's confusing if you're not entrenched in land use to understand these public hearings sometimes. And I think that's an error on our part for not communicating better to the people as to what it is the commission was looking for. But I thank you for your time very much and your diligence and your true thoughtfulness in, in looking at this matter. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for that, Ms. Austin. Are there any questions from the commission? Okay, I see none. And so at this point, we will open a public hearing. This is the point in the meeting where we will address any telecommenters that have submitted their form and are waiting on the line. The clerk will read the list in order and call the next speaker. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Speakers are asked to please address their comments to the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversation with members of the audience or staff. And Julia, do you see that we have folks waiting to speak?
Yes, we do. We actually received a request for telecomment over the break. And so I'm going to go ahead and allow to speak Josh Morsell. So Josh, I, I've just provided you the opportunity to unmute. Thank you. Please state your name for the record and I'll start your time once you begin speaking.
Hello, I, I am Josh Morsell. I'm Josh Morsell, you can hear me now. I'm here with my wife Leah and our two-year-old Henry. And we would like to comment in favor of the application and in favor of the cannabis accommodation combining district in our neighborhood here. We, back in September, we bought a property right next door to the, one of the Jade Court property that is subject to this application. So we're sandwiched between Amethyst and Jade and we look right across the street at, at their property. We can see their gate, we can see their barn. And, you know, I think the reason that we're supportive of this is it seems like that these cottage industries provide a lot of good for our community and they're so strictly regulated that they actually are quite good neighbors, I think. You know, so far, we've detected no problems. There, we don't smell them, we don't hear them, there's just a modest amount of traffic. It's not a problem. And, you know, the things I would be worried about would be like water use or chemical use or property values. You know, in terms of water use, they probably use less water than any other use of that property would because they store their water, they, you know, use stored water during the dry season, they recycle the water. It's very impressive. They don't use chemicals, their product is inspected to make sure they don't use chemicals. You know, someone else comes in there and puts in a tomato farm, they're not going to be regulated that way. So, you know, we're happy with the water and the chemicals issue. It seems actually safer than your average other neighbor. I don't think it's clear that they drive property values down. We just bought this property a few months ago. We were looking, you know, very closely at the market and the whole coast and property values were not lower in this neighborhood. I think that we have an opportunity as a community for cottage cannabis to be a sustainable industry that in, in the long run brings esteem to our area, the way grapes do for our inland neighbors. You know, some of the, some of the cannabis produced in this neighborhood is famous. And I think we should embrace that. And I think we're in danger of squandering it if we make life impossible for good, responsible legal growers right here. And we have to ask, would the alternative land uses actually be better for us? So, so yeah, we're in, in support of them. And we think it'd be short sighted to drive them away. And we hope the community can invest in supporting this cannabis accommodation combining district and, and industries like this. And, and, yeah, so, and I don't know that it was so easy for them to move. So Leah, do you want to say anything else?
Well, just like, if they're not going to grow in this neighborhood that is actually pretty well set up for it and where, like, they're having minimal impact, where are they going to grow? Like, they can't grow in town. They can't, where, where, where is this industry supposed to happen? It's thriving right here. Like, leave it alone.
So thank you, we're out of time. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. And so if there's other folks on the line who wish to provide comment, I don't have any other telecomment request forms in front of me. And so please use the raise hand feature if you wish to provide comment on this item. Okay, thank you. I see we have a hand raised from Joan Carroll. Let me go ahead. Joan, please go ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready. And we'll start the time once you begin speaking.
Thank you. My name is Joan Campagna. I'm a homeowner in the Metro Creek Heights subdivision. And I am one of the people who's been very involved in helping to organize our neighborhood. I think it's very disingenuous of the council for the applicant to say that the applicant had zero idea of opposition in the neighborhood. Our neighborhood said no in 2018. We said no again in 2021. In 2021, we submitted a consolidated letter of opposition showing that nine of the 16 parcels were against farming cannabis in our neighborhood. We have resubmitted that same letter again this year. So I think it's a little questionable why they say they don't know something that's been such public knowledge. The other point I'd like to make is this is a pretty big county. There's over 3,800 plus square miles. There's plenty of room for people to farm their product without having to disrupt robust, in-place, durable neighborhoods that give rise to the quality of life, which is why we all moved to an RRR neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, pause the timer here and reset. And I do see, we do have an additional hand raised. So I'm going to bring over Simeon Evans. Simeon, I've just given you the ability to unmute. Thank you. Please, I'll start the time once you begin speaking.
Hi, this is Simeon Evans. Again, I live near the proposed cultivation or the accommodation combining district and I'm speaking in support. This accommodation zone had a 75% approval rate from, from the people within the zone. I feel that the planning department, again, originally stated that this application met all of the requirements and recommended approval for the accommodation zone. Staff just commented that that was not a complete staff report, that that was shared prematurely before review. I don't believe that was true because I believe that that staff report was posted prior to the meeting that was passed, posted. So I think there's some kind of misunderstanding there. That was a complete staff report and it has been adjusted to recommend denial at this point in time. But again, like the other zone, the vast majority of people within the zone support and approve. I do understand that there's been such a long period of time that has passed since the original, the survey that went out and people, people signed their approval, which gave the 75% approval rate. And some of those people are no longer in the area. The neighborhood has changed. And while there are some people that haven't supported or don't support now in the new property, there are other people in the area that would support. So, you know, the staff made the important point that it's not a reason for denial that the, the threshold has changed because of the people has changed, because it's been two years since the application. But the, the whole neighborhood has, has evolved. And I think, you know, that should, that would need to be taken into consideration. I also just wanted to make comment about staff comments about gerrymandering and about the shape of the zone and about the fact that you have to go approach it from two different streets. I don't believe there's any criteria in the, in the code that requires that. I, I believe that it was very clear from staff that, that the, the parcels had to be contiguous, that 60% of people had to, property owners had to sign their support and that it did not matter what shape it was in or in what span it was. And, and I don't think that, I don't think that's a very appropriate. I don't think that, I don't think that's relevant. I, I think that, you know, the criteria is met and I think that you should approve the project. I think there's so many benefits to the community. I think these projects have been sitting in the name. approve the project. I think there's so many benefits to the community. I think these projects have been sitting in the neighborhood for many years and nobody was even aware of them until they came forward through licensing. And, and through this overlay, overlay zone process. And that all of the objections are based on, you know, black market cannabis, they're based on.
Sorry, that was time unless Chair, would you like for me to unmute and allow continuation of comments? How many more speakers do we have? I don't have any other hand raised, so I'm happy to go ahead and whatever the chair would like. I think, why don't we just give the same amount of time to everybody so that we're not showing preference one way or the other? So it sounds like we're complete on public comments. And you don't see any hands raised in the waiting room? I do not see any hands raised. I do see a hand raised from the previous, the commenter who had already commented, Joan Campagna. And so they have already had an opportunity to speak. Yep. So I'll need to stick with what I just said, which is that we will just keep it fair across the board and give everybody the same amount of time to speak. So with that, we will close the public hearing. And pardon me, Chair Purnell, let me stop sharing my screen here. I do just want to note there were some public comments submitted here during the, the middle of the, the hearing here. So that's something that we have allowed for during this virtual meeting procedure. They appear to be very brief. So if you'd like, I can read these into the record. They're also being uploaded to our webpage, whatever your preference may be. Please go ahead and read them. Okay. So the first is from Linda Turner and states, how is it that no is not the final answer on this issue? It is hard to fathom why the Board of Supervisors continues to entertain these requests. Since when is no not a complete answer? You must deny these requests once and for all. Sign John and Linda Turner. The second is from Catherine, excuse me, Catherine Montgomery and states that today's stench is particularly bad. Frankly, I'm very tired of smelling pot. And then the third is from Linda Turner and states, no to rezoning, no to commercial grows in our neighborhood, no to suspending the sunset provision. And that concludes the comments submitted during the hearing. Thank you for that, Julia. And so now we are officially closing the public. And does staff have any additional comments to make on this before we bring it back to the commission? Um, I would just like to just note for the record that the, the draft staff report that was provided as part of the public comment from the applicant and their legal counsel again was the draft staff report. It was not posted to the public webpage. And that is evidenced if you take a look at the planning commission agenda page for June 3, 2021, it was never a finalized report that was posted. And with that, that concludes any additional comments. Okay, thank you. So we'll bring it back to the commission. We'll go commissioner by commissioner with any questions or comments. And Commissioner Pollan, you're up first.
I have no questions or comments at this time.
Commissioner Jones?
I guess I do have one comment. There was a comment by the applicant's attorney that as far as she knew, most of the letters were not from the neighborhood. And I've lived here a long time, so I actually know names. And most of the letters that, that were received in opposition are actually from that neighborhood. So that is an incorrect statement. And I just wanted to make that for the record. Other than that, I don't have any comments. My feeling about this application or my reading of it, I shouldn't say feeling, is very similar to the prior application. Except that in this case, it doesn't even meet the minimum approval for the number of property owners in the district. So essentially the applicant is asking us to rezone the property of people who do not want their property rezoned into this district. And that would be 50% of the parcels. And to me, that is just not good planning, put it bluntly. And my other comments about the other application are similar. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wedeman?
I had a comment about one of the phone call speakers who said, who I think recently purchased a property and made a comment, there hasn't been any problems in the neighborhood. But I was actually at a neighboring property off of Amethyst, and there was a huge marijuana bust. And it came from neighbors who did a complaint. And so I just, and that was some years back, but there, it's been contentious for a long time. Just that, you know, the whole issue there. So I just wanted I, the young couple that just bought in, I wanted to give them that little bit of history. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say at this point.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just add my two cents quickly, which is that, you know, for all of the neighbors and patrons of the business that are in support, again, I'm very happy to hear that this is a good business and not causing problems for, for certain people. Cause that's actually what we want, right? That's, that's what these regulations are for. And so it's actually wonderful to hear that they're working well. And that's heartening to me. And again, that's not the issue before us today. We just have to decide whether or not this is the appropriate location from a land use perspective. And the neighborhood's not in support. The findings aren't there. And so I'm just not able to support this application. And I do see deputy county councils hand up.
Deputy County Council Matthew Kudrowski, one quick comment in terms of, you know, reasons for denial. The, this is the 60% threshold was for application. I think the commissioners noting that it has dropped beneath that now and some other commentators noting it may have stabilized. It really was more for an application standpoint. And clearly the commission can take into account neighborhood comments in terms of the, the basis for it. And staff has presented its recommendation in the staff report and reasons that would support the recommendation for denial. But just strictly speaking, the 60% threshold was, was an application issue, not necessarily an approval issue.
Yeah. So Matthew, I am aware of that. My point was rather that 50% of the parcel owners in the new zone don't want their property rezoned, which is not an application issue or an approval issue. It's just a fact that that's what I was stating.
Understood.
Okay, so commissioners, this is a chance for last comments or to make a motion.
So as the fourth district representative, again, I will go ahead and make a recommendation that we adopt the resolution of the planning commission, county of Mendocino, state of California, making its report and recommendations to the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors, recommending the denial of the rezoning of certain parcels to create a commercial cannabis accommodation combining district, RR dash two zero one nine dash zero zero one two.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Joan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Chair Purnell?
Yes.
Question passes for denial or zero?
Moving on to agenda item eight matters from the commission. Commissioner Jones?
I have a question of our county attorney, and that is now that we're down to four members, does it make sense for Diana and I to continue meeting as an ad hoc on the vacation rental issue? Or should I just bring forward that proposal as I wrote it? Because Diana actually hasn't given me any feedback yet. I just, I, and, and, and on that same note, if commissioners want to talk about an application before it comes forward, is two commissioners talking about an application of problem just from a forum perspective?
Deputy County Council Matthew Kudrowski, thank you for the question. That is not something I've had time to consider. It still is not a majority of the body. So I, I'm not aware that would cause, have caused for concern. I will discuss that further with county council and see if, if there is. But I think only if we had, say, a three-member commission, would that be a particular problem? And that's my gut reaction. So I'll follow up on that.
The only reason I asked is I know that when, if there's a two-two vote, then it's an automatic denial. So that was the only reason I asked.
And then to clarify, deputy county council, did that also apply to the issue of two commissioners speaking about an issue prior to a meeting?
No concerns. It's only a Brown Act issue. And that's where the, the ad hoc comes into play if there's less than a quorum. We're talking about. So.
I thought that's what it was, but I just wanted to confirm that that applied to both of our questions.
Thank you.
And then relating to our open seat staff, do you know if having an appointment is in the works? I will be doing some homework on that this coming week. I do know that I believe that the supervisor was seeking to fill that position as soon as possible, but I am not aware if there's any pending appointments scheduled for a board meeting or anything like that. As you're aware, an application must be filed and then it goes onto a board calendar for the appointment. Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else from the commission?
I have one more question to clarify with Julia. When this goes forward to the board, I assume all the letters in favor and support will just go forward so people won't have to rewrite letters?
That is correct. They get attached as a correspondence packet.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item nine, approval of the meeting minutes from January 6, 2022.
One quick comment from deputy county council on the last point. People are obviously encouraged to write letters at any level they desire. So.
Yes, sir. I didn't mean to imply that they shouldn't.
I make, I make a motion to approve the January 6, 2022 minutes.
Do we have a second? A second?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wedeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Chair Purnell?
Yes.
Question granted?
Okay. And our final agenda item is adjournment. Looking for that motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Lovely day, everybody.
Good meeting, Chair. You did a good job.